Would Clerk Seegrist please call the roll?
All right, Trustee Anthony.
President.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Let the, oh, Trustee Graham Hudek is not here yet. Let the record reflect Clerk Seegrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
Hello.
And Supervisor Williams.
Hello.
Call for the adoption of the agenda with one change, and that is to add the agenda item called "Add-on," considering the approving the purchase of a 2019 GMC Yukon XL.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the Board adopt the agenda as presented with the adding item "Add-on" to Item 1.
So move.
Do it first.
Okay. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Should we handle the item first, Michael? Okay. So, in terms of a summary, on January 22nd, 2019, the Board approved RBA G5 for multiple township vehicles, purchases that included a 2019 F-250 pickup for the fire department. The vehicle was not purchased, and the department is now requesting instead a 2019 GMC Yukon XL in the amount of $45,545 from Todd Wenzel Buick GMC. This quote is a publicly bid government pricing contract administered through Oakland County. And also, in further discussion with Director Meyer, and I don't know if Chris wants to add, is the original concept was to go with a pickup truck with a cover on the backside to carry their gear around, and it won't offer the same protection that the Yukon, where they can put it inside the vehicle on the back end and close it up, so that it's a better protection from the elements for the gear. And then there's also a time element to this request, and maybe, Chris, you can expand on that.
The cutoff date for the 2019 purchases on GMC is this Thursday, so that's why I had to come to the Board tonight. But going back to the summary, the fire department, when this originally went through, I didn't review the RBA for, that Clerk had approved and sent through, and he was working with one of our captains for the, for the purchase of this vehicle. We had originally planned on doing a Yukon, and the captain had went to the route of a pickup truck, so once I found out that that had taken place, we kind of retracted that and didn't purchase it at that point. And we know what the needs are of the department, and I didn't execute that well with the captain.
Are there any questions?
It's still in the budget, uncovered.
Yeah, 50,000 was covered, it just.
Fifty up to 50.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So it's not any new money, it's just changing from a 250 now to a Yukon with the request to do it now because of Thursday deadline.
Right. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of one 2019 GMC Yukon XL in lieu of the previously Board-approved 2019 Ford F-250 in the amount of $45,545 from Todd Wenzel Buick GMC.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion is present, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Now, on to the original purpose of the study session tonight, is the 29 recommended water and sewer rates. I know Wendy and Bob have been working diligently behind the scenes, I know your staff, and you're going to tell us Wendy and Bob, who on your teams have also been working hard behind the scenes to bring this to us tonight. So Wendy, Bob, who do I have to kick it over to?
I'm going to start it out.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Real quick introductions, I'm Bob Belair, Public Works Manager, we've got Wendy Trumbull, our Finance Director. In the audience, we've got Sarah Clay, our Finance Manager, and Brad Lear, our Public Works Superintendent. Those two out there are integral in this whole process and have probably done most of the legwork in the development of the rates, so they definitely deserve some accolades. Our goal tonight is to run through this 42-page document in hopes that you don't have to read it page by page and you understand it very well, in preparation of adopting it at the first meeting in April, along with our recommended rates. So this whole process, we start our annual rate setting in December of the previous year, so last December, we started actually setting the schedule. We develop a 31-step process every year with dates associated with all 31 steps on how we develop the rates. We received our final rates from GLWA, Great Lakes Water Authority, at the end of January. So, once we actually get those rates, then it's a race. Pretty much all of February, we're running calculations, going through the various features of our water rates, the fixed assets, the debt, which everything Wendy will go through. But really, we thought, tonight, instead of doing a PowerPoint presentation, we would just go through this document, page by page, not, well, not page by page, but section by section, we don't need to go through every page, but we can highlight some of the important features of this rate study. And then, at the end, we'll just answer questions if you have any. So, starting with the background, it's the third page in, it talks about how we develop rates. In 2005, we went through the process of developing a true cost of service study for our water and sewer rates, so we take into all the expenses and the revenue that the township incurs for our water and sewer system, that's all calculated into our water and sewer rates. In 2008, that cost report was updated, and we continue to use that same methodology today. Wendy goes through and calculates everything on a true cost of service basis. Some important features to remember, when we developed that first study in 2005, we realized that a lot of our costs are fixed, so we started developing fixed charges into our rate system. So, we allocated the fixed charges based on capacity of the meter, and we use those to cover costs that we incur regardless of the volume of water purchased. We know that there is a cost associated with our system, no matter if we sell any water or not, we still have to operate and run our system. So those costs are in there. The rate recommendations, that's the important part, kind of the highlight of the entire document. It talks about, so the cash balance, at the end of 2018, we had $26.35 million in our fund reserve. The target that Wendy calculates every year, the target fund balance is $19 million, so we have some excess in there. You have to remember, last year, when we went through this process, we allocated $7.5 million, that was calculated into the 2018 rates for the Watuah expansion. Since that time, Watuah has hired an engineer, they've gotten more in-depth, they've realized the costs are a little more than originally anticipated. Canton's share of that, right now, is estimated at about $8.9 million. We share that cost with Plymouth Township and Northville Township. Since it's a little higher, we included that extra $1.4 million in this year's rates, so that's in the calculations. But, what it all means, the second paragraph, probably the most important to everyone, the proposed combined water sewer rate will decrease, this is what we're proposing this year, we're proposing a decrease of an average of 3.36% for all of our customers. One other thing important to note on there, is we are moving to bimonthly billing this year. Diane's been integral in that, and we've had several meetings on it over the past year planning for this. So instead of the residential customers being billed quarterly, we're going to move them to a bimonthly process. This will ease the burden on a lot of customers, instead of having, you know, only four bills a year, they'll be moved to six bills, so hopefully, it'll be a little bit less for them to pay in increments. Eventually, I don't know how long this is going to be, but we'd like to move to monthly. I think that would be a great goal for the township, hopefully in the next three to five years, we can get that completed. I think as things get more automated, and we update our water system and complete all of our automatic meter reading, install possibly a central antenna in the township that we can just pulse everything and read it instantaneously, that'll help all of us. I don't envision that process being done for at least another year or two, it just takes time to get all 29,000 of our meters changed out. We probably have about 8,000 left right now, we're doing about 5,000 a year, so hopefully in the next year to two years, we'll have everything automated. The next page, recommended rates, that just shows the changes, so water rates are going to go up by about 12 cents per 1,000 gallons, some of the fixed charges go up a little bit, too. The main factor in our fixed costs going up this year is the residential cross-connection program. We are mandated by the state to require homeowners that have irrigation systems to start testing those backflow devices. We went out and surveyed them all last year, we have about 12,000 in the township, we're going to break that up over a five-year period. Our first phase will start in 2020, we've already started the education process, going out in the Focus monthly, telling people about the process, why it's required, it is a necessary safety issue for all of us. So you'll hear more about that certainly this year. System equity charges, Wendy calculates that every year, those are going up a little bit, about $32 a year on that, or per charge when somebody ties into the system. Sewer charges, the next page, sewer charges are continuing to go down, it's one thing we've noticed from YCUA, we switched over completely to them midway through last year, or 2017, and those, they seem to hold their prices very well, as far as their commodity charges to us. So, we've realized more cost savings as the year progressed last year, and you can see there is quite a reduction, from $5.80 down to $5.28 per 1,000 gallons on the commodity charge. Fixed charges, once again, those are going up a little bit, just because cost of everything continues to increase. Sewer connection charge, that's another important one, that's what somebody pays to get into our system, that's going up a little bit. Appendix A, the first part's just definitions. If you go to Page A2, that shows a little bit of our rate history. So you could see a real trend up until 2017 of the water rates increasing, you know, 2016, the combined went up about 7.3%, 2017, they went up about 10%, and then you see the drastic reduction in 2018, combined 4.6%, that was mainly due to us building our water storage facility, and also getting out of the GLWA DWSD sewer system. So we realized a double impact on that one. The next page, A3, that is the water-only side of that factor, you can see the huge change there, July 1st of 2018, our water rate went down 28%. That was us renegotiating the contract with the GLWA and becoming a max-day customer instead of a peak-hour customer. So that really helped us out. And 2019, you can see the percent change, 1.8%, so you're starting to see it flatten out. That was our entire goal, along the process of developing and building that water storage facility, that it would hopefully flatten out those increases that we've been seeing from GLW traditionally for the last 30 years. The next page, that's the sewer side, you can see on that that YCUA, well, DWSD, if you look at their column, you see a minus 100%, minus 100%, that's because we got out of their system. So we have a pretty big savings there. YCUA, you can see, they keep their rates pretty flat, $1.38, $1.39, $1.38 the last three years, that's their rate per 1,000 cubic feet. So that's a good thing, that's one of the reasons we went with YCUA, they always seem to keep a real stable rate that they provide and give to us. Page A5, just the consumption history on that one. You can see, 2016, 2017, we bought about 2.8 billion gallons, 2018 was a wet summer, so you see the impact of that on our water sales, they went down by about 300 million gallons in sales last year. The great thing, I'm a numbers guy, I like looking at this, you see the UFW percentage, that's unfunded water percentage, for 2018, we're at about 2.97%, 3%. So that means about 3% of the water that we purchase, we're not realizing an income back on it. That's extremely low, national average is probably around 10%. DWSD, I know their system last year was 30%, GLWA's is up in the 20 percentile, that's what happens when you have old systems, you lose water, it's just nature of the beast, the infrastructure's crumbling, we all hear about it constantly. So we're in good shape, though, and we pride ourselves on that number every year. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Wendy, she's going to talk about the budget.
Yep, the numbers, the good stuff. All right, so if you look at Page A6, this shows basically where the expenses are budgeted for the upcoming year, so where we start is with the budget that was adopted by the Board for 2019, and we say, yep, it's, this is the page I'm looking at right here, in case you're looking for it. So Sarah, and myself, and Bob, and Brad sit down, and we go through the budget, and we say, where do we think we're actually going to end up? So we kind of look at where previous years have ended up, looking at the current year budget, and try to even out if there's extra room in the budget, did we budget some extra just so we had a little bit of extra, where do we think we're actually going to end up at the end of the day? Because what our goal is, is to collect the right amount of cash for what we need to pay our bills and set the rates based on that. So we try to look at our expenses to make sure that the expenses are appropriate. So some of the things we kind of tweak, and you'll see later on, I won't touch it, but you can see the budget that we use to go through, and that those numbers go from the back of your packet up to this Page A6. So, at the end of the day, when we look at the budgeted operating expenses, about two-thirds of the way down the page, it's $37.5 million. So, of all the budgeted expenses, that's where we think the actual expenses are going to end up, at the end of 2019. So we start with that, and then there's a couple things we have to back out, so example, there's this non-cash expenses line for $3.7 million, that's depreciation, we don't need to cover cost for depreciation expense, because we're already covering the cost of the capital that we're purchasing, so we don't need the depreciation expense, so we back that out, we say, if we need $37.5 million, we need $3.7 million less than that now, because we don't need to cover those costs. Also, other revenues, so things like interest income penalties, the equity charges, when people tap into the system, we'll collect some revenue, so there's cash that we receive that we also don't need to charge our residents on top of that, so we back that away from the needed cash. A couple things we have to add back, though, we have some debt payments that come due that are not budgeted as budgeted expenses, just in the manner in which Enterprise Fund, the Water and Sewer Fund, is required to be budgeted, those are not included in the budget, so we have to collect cash for those. And then, believe it or not, you know, Bob had briefly spoken that we had $26 million of cash, our minimum cash balance was about $19 million, but that is earmarked for the Watuah expansion. In fact, we're transferring that money over to Watuah, so they're holding on to a further expansion. So the reality is, to get back up to the cash balance we need, we need to add cash of about $1.4 million to get up to the targeted cash balance this year. So, at the end of the day, we need to collect cash from our residents, and, well, users of the system, of $33 million. So if you flip to the next page, here, it's kind of a crazy spreadsheet, but at the end of the day, if you look at the first kind of column with numbers in it, it says, required revenues to meet cash requirements, we need to get $33 million here. At the end of the day, we're taking these amounts of money, what we say we need to collect for water revenue and sewer revenue, that 16.1 million and the 13.7 million, at the end of the day, we're dividing that by how much water we think we're going to sell. So, if you flip back one page to Page A5, we have our consumption history of two points, we're estimating, or GLWA this year's estimating, that we're going to purchase 2.7 billion gallons of water. However, if you look at the last average of five years, this average on the far right is the average since inception, but if you actually look at the average from the last five years and the last 10 years, we actually have been selling 2.6 billion gallons of water. So we basically come back over to this A7 page, we take those two amounts, the 16.1 and the 13.7, divided by the 2.6 that we're estimating we're going to sell, and that's how we come up with what our rate's going to be. So with that, it goes to the rates that Bob had spoken, this is so dark, and I need glasses, and I'm in denial that I need them, it's 6.23 for water, and 5.28, 5.28, yep, 5.28 for the sewer revenue. So, it's just really a mathematical equation, but in theory, we're just trying to capture what we need to recover our costs, and this is the mathematical equation that we use to do that. Other questions on that part of it? Okay. The next page is really just a breakdown, which Treasurer's Office uses to help figure out how we break down the fixed charges on the bill, so it's, we really don't need to cover that too much. And the next page, on Page A9, this is where the cash and investment balances are at the end of 2018. So you can see the far-right column, this is before the audit, but we're pretty confident these numbers are pretty close, $26.3 million of cash on hand at December 31st, we're earmarking $8.9 million of that for Watuah, coming up with 17, with a balance of 17.4, and our needed cash, you know, our minimum cash, cash or target cash balance that we should have on hand, is 18.8. So that's where, when I said we needed to add about $1.36 million to cash, that's where that number comes from. The next few pages, I have no idea why I colored these yellow and blue, that's not like me, but these are just where we get the numbers from for the budget. So, if you really want to look at the detail, the ones that I covered in front that said we needed $33 million of cash, that's where we get these numbers from. I'm not going to spend time going through those, though. So really, the rest of these are just some of the internal documents we use, but if you want to flip a few to Appendix B, to this 2019 water and sewer rate changes sheet, I think, yep, Bob can take from there.
Yep, and I'll take over till the end. Okay, so this sheet here, it's just a summary page of sample water bills, so what we do is, we take those water and sewer rates that were calculated and being recommended, we drop them into a bunch of typical water bills for some customers, so we show an average residential bill there, and it results in about a 2.5% reduction for them. The one important thing to remember, and we talked about this last year, is the higher users, the more water you use, you're going to get a better rate, because a lot of the costs associated with water are fixed. And, a lot of that plays into the question we get every year, why can't I have a separate irrigation meter? Remember last year, we ran through the exercise, and we showed you that having a separate irrigation meter would be beneficial to the high-volume users that have irrigation systems, but it would negatively affect the people that don't have irrigation systems, and typically the older homes, older individuals in the township, older empty nesters that just have two people that use the low volumes, it would negatively affect them by allowing irrigation meters in the township. So at that time last year, the Board decided we weren't even going to look at it any further. I still get the questions every year, I already had it two or three times in the last week, I've had calls, emails, when can I put mine in? And I have to explain that to them, and it's all right, I explain it every year, I have for the last 10. But, just a summary, you know, one important thing to remember here is, these are just a sampling of the bills through the community, I mean, I'm showing nine different types, there's a lot more than this in the community. That's why you don't see that 3.36 average on all of these, that 3.36 is the entire system all put together. So that's why we see that, but this is just a sample. If you want to skip through, you can skip through all the sample bills. Final part, really, here is the communications plan, it's just important to note that, you know, next week, we're going to have a public forum, March 27th, it's right here, at 6:00. We have that every year, so we invite the public in, we've advertised it several times, we've been advertising it for the past three months. So at that time, we invite the customers in here, we give them basically the same presentation, same information, but we allow them to ask questions, and at that time, I'll be asked about irrigation meters again, it's inevitable.
When can we get those?
Get out. So, that's going on next week, in April, we'll have our first reading, April 9th, for the recommended ordinance revisions, also adoption of this rate study. The final meeting in April, we'll have the second reading of the rate recommendations. And then, May 1st, we start the new water rates. At that time, we'll also publish them in the Focus, the rates, we'll have public information on it, we'll also put information out on our website with the new rates, and typically, we do some information on the cable station. I included Appendix D here, this is our Great Lakes Water Industrial Waste Charges, since we got out of their system, we only have three customers that pay IWC charges now, they're all up on Joy Road, and they're connected directly to GLWA's system, and that's part of the negotiation process that's ongoing with GLWA, DWSD, and Wayne County getting out of their system, that's still not finalized. Actually, we received the final agreement just this morning, that'll be on the agenda likely May, or April 9th. So, we'll be providing information on that, it'll be that separation agreement, finally, we've been working on it for about a year and a half now. With that.
Do we send any volumes to them these days?
No, we send zero to them, the only, the only flow they get is a portion from the City of Plymouth, which runs through Watuah and is diverted, bypassed through, and then they get those three customers along Joy Road.
Depending on what Plymouth, City of Plymouth, and Nova I do, there may be some things occurring as part of the separation agreement.
Yeah, so part of the separation agreement, and you'll see it here in the next week or two, there's some swapping areas that's going on with that, so.
Won't impact Canton, but.
Yeah, it won't impact us, yep. So we might take on the City of Plymouth's flow in our system, but we might be sending other flow to GLWA through Watuah. It's a big swap agreement, it's been fun to go through, a year and a half, you've got to love it.
The public presentation, will it be back to the PowerPoint, more simple presentation?
Yeah, yeah, so our public presentation, it's a lot more condensed, we just kind of show five or six pie charts to the people that attend, some years, we have only one or two attend.
Right.
I think our maximum I've ever seen was 20, 25 maybe.
That was when we reduced water rates.
And that, that was the year we reduced.
Good one.
Yeah.
So we should have a rulebook.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's a much more condensed version, it doesn't even, we don't even present this entire study to them, we just kind of show them the department budgets, and describe to them how we go about the rate-setting process, and then we answer questions.
And the budgets are a pie chart, it's not the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
It's the high-level summary.
Michael?
On the expense side, I, the 200, I think it was $230,000, $230,000 that is for bonds, is that, were those the bonds to build the water tower, or are they for something else?
The 230,000?
It's, it's part of the expenditures under Appendix A, no.
2.8 million?
Pardon me. I was going to ask it when you were doing your presentation.
I'm sorry.
But I did not. The, okay, yeah, $239,800, $239,800, I know it's insignificant, probably seems insignificant compared to the total, but when we.
Yeah, that would be, that would be the interest on the water tower.
Okay. What's the life?
That was a seven-year life, we still have on the sewer bonds from when we issued the debt for Watuah from years ago, I think that goes out until 20, I think that's, I think that goes three years further than what, maybe, it's further out, but the water, the water was intended to be paid off within seven years, so that will be gone within seven years, and I can get you for sure the date that they expire, if you guys are interested in that.
No, that's okay, that's okay. That's okay.
Adding on to that, is there anything in here or can we get separately showing the effect of the water tower on our costs?
We can get you a history of where the, where they have been.
Can we figure out how much we've saved if we didn't do it versus if we did?
We could probably say here's what our usage has been, you know, was in the past and, you know, assuming it...
Because we're using cheaper gallons now, right?
Right.
That's the effect of doing it, but...
It's hard because we know what our, our rate was already lowered from GLWA, but we could say it increases at three percent per year to show here's what it would have been if, assuming a three percent increase from before the, before it dropped.
I'm just wondering if the cost on the bonds is outweighing the savings still or if we feel like the savings are, we're actually seeing some savings. Because I know there was a certain number of years, you said the seven years of the bond, I don't remember how many years that we were paying off that water tower. And I'm wondering if we're going to even see more savings once that's done.
Well, this is the first full year.
Yeah, the one, the one thing...
This is the first full year we've had it, or eighteen was, you mean?
Yeah, once the debt's retired. Also keep in mind as a board, this group may not be doing it, but on the west side of Canton, we should probably build another tower at some point when we're built out completely because that, the tower we built does not service...
Yeah, it doesn't service anything west of Beck.
Yeah.
But when we designed it, we designed it with extra capacity to do that.
Oh, you did?
Yes, we did.
Okay, that's good to know.
And the other thing?
Yeah, that's the extra half million gallons we included in there. The initial design of that facility was about two million gallons. When we built it, we realized we might have to address extra volumes on the west side of the township. So we designed the extra half million gallons into that tank, which, when the calculations were done by OHM, that's what they told us we needed to handle that side of the township. So it wouldn't necessarily be another storage tank, but it might be another line feeding that area. Yep.
And then the other thing to take into consideration, and we won't know until Yucca pulls together all their costs, is they need to build or rebuild their incinerator or burning system at some point in the near future, and it's going to be a big bill, a very big bill.
Yeah, that's going to be expensive. One thing I could give you, Steve, is the initial reduction that we had when we renegotiated our contract with GLWA, the savings that year was just over three million. So that continues every year. If you want, if you wanted, we could show you that number. So at that time, we had anticipated and estimated that our return on investment of that station would be three years or less, and we're right on target for that.
Okay.
So you can see, if you look at, well, I can't really direct you to the page because it's not numbered, but the water purchases for the 2018 budget, as it was adopted, was fourteen million dollars. So the board had adopted fourteen million dollars, which was done a couple of years in advance before the water tower was done. And we are expecting to sell water or purchase water of ten point six million dollars. So that's a three and a half million dollar reduction between what the board had adopted for 2018 and what we're expecting for 2019.
And that goes back to, in my head, it was a couple of year payback.
It was like a three and a half year payback, I think, is what we anticipated.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah, three and a half.
So if those, and those numbers will, I would expect, hold true.
Okay.
So we're seeing decisions made twenty and ten years ago paying off big time today.
Yeah, we started working on that water storage project in 2006. That was the first year we started studying it.
And I can show you a history of where the water purchases have been. That's an easy number to pull and where we think it's going to end up for 2019. And you can see that history compared to where we think that debt payments are going to be.
And that we're buying cheaper water now on average.
Correct, yep.
And the only next big, big step in terms of savings is the communities, communities banding together, buy water together.
Yeah.
Which is at this point still just a concept. Nick's and I are in favor of it in terms of continuing the conversation. Wild's in favor of it, Wright's in favor of it, Wright's moving out, won't be there next year.
Where's he?
He's not going to run again, so. And then you've got Plymouth Township is not interested at this point, so that's why we're going to go around and save more.
Yeah, and they have to be contiguous communities, so that's why you have to almost do a...
Interesting.
Just here, concept, until, it could be years. You know, it starts like with the water tower.
Yeah.
Back then, and you know, slow roll, we finally get there.
What would be the cost of running a line from the water tower to the west side of the township, do you estimate?
There's a lot of factors that go into that. To get from, so you'd have to run it from Morton Taylor out past Beck, you're probably looking at a million, million and a half.
Michigan Avenue pipe that we had to redo recently, it was about a million.
Yeah, yeah. Typically, depending on the size, a million dollars a mile for the larger pipe.
A mile?
Yeah.
I think that's a lot of miles though, right? To go from Morton Taylor out past Beck?
That would just be a couple of miles down the road. Yeah, it'd probably be one to two million. That's ballpark, I think.
And do you have to go south too, or you just hook into something that's...
We would probably just have to tie into the transmission main over there so we can control volumes along Beck Road. That whole line going down Beck Road from Joy feeds pretty much that quarter of the township or a third of the township.
Bob, what part of the township do you have footing drains? And what are the footing drains?
So footing drains are in the homes, everything built prior to like nineteen seventy-eight, seventy-six. When they constructed the home, they put drains around the footings. Nowadays, you see them all go into a sump pump. That's why people have sump pumps. Prior to that, so prior to seventy-six, seventy-eight, they would run those lines right into the sanitary sewer. So all that excess water, when it comes down around your foundation from rain, goes right into our sewers, causes a surcharge. That was a lot of the reasoning that we put in all the relief sewers and the first expansion to Watuah back in 2007, 2008.
Because the sump pumps, basically the owners pay for those separately and so...
And they pump those out into the storm sewer.
Okay.
So we're not treating that water.
Okay, that's just being, okay. But we're paying, but those with the footing drains are paying more then because of that?
Yeah. Yeah, it's four dollars and fifty cents a month. That's what we calculated it out to be.
That's prior to seventy-eight, okay.
Yeah, it was sometime right around there.
Okay.
You know, one of the questions I'm getting from residents, because we're going to the bimonthly, is the fixed charges. They think it's going to stay the same. And I told them, you calculate what the fixed charges will be, and then you're going to divide it by the billing. You know, because now they get four bills, they think it's going to be the same with their six bills. So maybe, you know, at your town hall, you can, that might be a question.
Yeah, and we show, we show that in our calculations there. We show bimonthly and quarterly.
Okay.
So we can show them that difference even.
Sure, thank you.
So when residents call and ask you, you said they call you a lot and ask you about some of their, the meters. Do you also explain the high use to them and how much it costs versus the low use residential? Or is it just basically meter questions?
Can you reiterate that?
Sure, sorry. So you said a lot of residents call you about meter questions, when you can, they can put in their own meters.
Typically about irrigation-only meters.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's typically the west side guys that have an acre of land that they want to sprinkle?
Yeah.
Yep. All the bigger, newer homes. Yeah, we did a survey on them all last year. We have just under twelve thousand homes that have irrigation systems.
Bob, do you have a figure you're going to start inspecting in-ground sprinkler systems? Is there a cost that you're going to charge the homeowner?
Backflow.
We're, we're not going to. So what, what we'll have to do is we have to manage the system, the program. So we, we use Hydro Designs or Hydro Corp. now. They manage our industrial cross-connection program already. We've used them for the last at least twelve years, I think. That, the state has really pushed that program for longer because there's a higher probability of contamination coming from industrial facilities. With the lead stuff going on in Flint and the scrutiny that the state has been under, they, they really started pushing communities to push this out to residential owners. So there will be a cost to homeowners. They'll be responsible for hiring a company that has to be a certified ASSE backflow prevention tester. It's a certification they get through the state. They have to hire someone that has that certification to test their backflow preventer once every five years. Typically ranges between fifty and a hundred dollars for each test. The one thing I was starting to say though, we have to administer that program. We have to manage, you know, twenty-five hundred homes per year, make sure they actually follow through with the testing, track them, submit them to the state. So we hire Hydro Designs to do that. It's about a two hundred thousand dollar a year cost to have them manage that program. That's calculated and baked into our rates already. As I said, the fixed rates for water are going up this year. That's the main factor. We had to add that two hundred thousand dollars in there.
And when do we get the appropriation from the state for that two hundred thousand dollars?
You didn't get it?
No.
I was under the impression with the Headley Amendment that it's unlawful for them to mandate we do something without providing appropriate funds.
We've kind of already said, go ahead and go.
That's a tough one. I mean, the requirement for cross-connection has actually been in the Clean Water Act since the seventies, and it does not specify residential versus commercial or industrial. So they're falling back on that statement saying that, no, it's been in there forever. Doesn't matter if you're residential, commercial, industrial.
Bob, will you have a list of qualified contractors that do that certification of the in-ground sprinkler system?
Yeah, yeah. There's actually a list on the state website right now. There's probably about a six-page list of contractors. You can search by your area even. You can type in your zip code and it'll give you a whole list of who does that testing, who's qualified.
Where is that device? Is it in the house or in the ground?
Nope, it's on the outside. You know, where your irrigation system comes out. It's that little RPZ they call it. It's a backflow preventer.
Yeah. Most, most, if you would, and your sprinkler system was put in, if you had a good guy do it, you've got one. It just needs to be tested.
Yep.
It's a little thing with a ball inside.
Yeah.
That thing.
And we're not setting ourselves up next year for a rate increase, are we?
Yep.
And we, we talked about all the capitals, capital that was needed in 2020, and we're trying to make sure we're balancing out any rate increases. We didn't want to suggest a decrease. The decrease would have been larger. But we, we spoke and we said we want to try to balance out the future with the current. We don't want to give a, I think at one point, it was like a 10% decrease, but we're like, gosh, we don't want to give a 10% decrease this year and the next year turn around and ask for a 10% increase. So we're trying to balance it out. So we did move some capital that were needed, some equipment that is needed for DPW for the water system. We bumped that into this year to purchase, to help get that stuff purchased now. So next year, hopefully, you know, I can't promise that it's going to be a zero percent, but we're certainly trying to smooth it out so it's not going to be a large increase. We certainly don't want to flip-flop with users every year.
Yeah.
Great.
Diane, did you want to talk a little bit about bimonthly, or do you want me to?
Yeah, I can just go over a little bit of the bimonthly. They'll be starting to read the meters in May for bimonthly. And so because we have, we actually have four ledgers. One's the commercial, and then we have, it's zero, no, it's called zero. And then we have ledger two, three, and one. So we're going to be combining two and one and then zero and three. So people will, even though we're starting to read the meters in May, they're, they're still going to get their last quarterly bill. So I don't want people to think their May bill is going to be a bimonthly. It won't be until June, end of May for one, one of the ledgers, but June will be another. So I think that's real important for residents to know. They will see the bimonthly towards the middle of the summer.
And one of the ledgers, just so the board's aware, because you could get some questions on it, I believe it's the neighborhood south of Palmer, or all of the residents that are south of Palmer, they will get a bill that is due at the end of May, and they're going to get a second bill that's due the first week of June. It's going to represent one month. So we need to make sure those residents understand that if they get a second bill, that, don't throw it away. It's an actual second bill. So, and we're going to educate.
Yeah, with the transition, because, and we knew this was going to happen to one of the ledgers. With the transition going from quarterly, that bill will be due May 29th. And then because we're starting to read the, you know, the bimonthly, they will get a one month, their bimonthly then, that will be due June 5th, so. And that's just one of the ledgers it's happening to, and there's no way to get around it.
It's going to, and the other two ledgers are going to get a bill two months later, but it's going to represent three months of usage because they still have their quarterly. So after that first odd billing time, it's going to be back, it's going to be on track for everybody. So everybody's going to feel, maybe get an unexpected bill a little bit earlier, but it's going to, it had to happen if we were going to switch to bimonthly billing, so it's just a...
Can we mark the envelopes?
We, and we...
It's been, well, what...
Yeah, what we did was we, with the last bill that was mailed out, we sent out, we put little flyers in those bills, and it was yellow paper. So hopefully, people who got their bills read their little yellow paper. And then my staff's been really good too when people are coming in to remind them about that. Plus, we have a little cheat sheet that we're passing out for people to know when their bill is coming out, when it's due, so.
Yeah, and we've been both working with Amy, trying to get the right communications out. We're going to talk about it at the public forum.
Yeah.
And I think we're, we'll put it on the Facebook page, I'm sure, social media, and we'll probably make a point on the front page of the website, like, you know, just to highlight it. Because it's, I think the people it's going to affect the most are the people who have a bill due April 29th and might think another one came in and they said, I just paid this. This is, this isn't for me. So we got to make sure that people are telling their neighbors that it's a one. And, and I think we talked about sending emails out to the HOAs who are in all those south of Palmer as well, to let them know so they can let their residents know.
Okay.
Okay, if there are no further board questions, this is not a vote, but do we basically have consensus allowing a team to go ahead and continue with the process?
This will be what is presented to the board on April 9th, so as long as the board's comfortable with it, we will ask the board to accept it at that point in time.
I think this is an excellent job. Thank you very much for your hard work.
Yeah, thank you.
Everybody who's here.
Sir, Brad as well.
And when do we get the second meters?
No, you don't.
You don't. We're, we're going to get you an invisible one and install it.
You and Steve can work that out in the parking lot. Okay, do we have any public comment? Do we have any public comment? Melissa, you should be made aware, if you're not already, there's been a vibration issue in the east side of town. The Wayne County Emergency Manager, as well as the State Emergency Manager, has been reached out to, and their response is they don't have any idea. Brad's taken lead with public safety for us. We've had people out all last night, today, and Public Safety's asking that residents who are experiencing their homes vibrating, any unusual noise, vibration, sounds, please contact the Public Safety Non-Emergency Number, give them the facts with what happened, what time exactly, and what their location is exactly. And then Public Safety's going to map it for Bob and his team so they can look in terms of what's above ground and below ground in those areas to figure it out. So it's being looked at. I don't know if you have contacts back through the Wayne County Emergency Management Team, but say, hey, shrugging your shoulders is not the right answer. Do you have resources that you could give to Canton to assist? That'd be tremendous. And I, I don't even know if they have staffing for that, so it's a question. Yeah, thank you.
How often is that occurring? Or is it random?
Well, one of the residents I spoke to, no, it's intermittent, more so in the evening. One of the residents says it started about three months ago, and at this point, we need to find things where we can draw correlations to try to determine what root causes. You understand this better than anybody else in the automotive world who do this all day, is there's something out there. This is science happening. We just got to figure it out.
And before, it was semis, when, years ago?
Well, there was a very specific experience that Bob had, and I'll let you share that Well, there was a very specific experience that Bob had, and I'll let you share that, or-
Yeah, so, so we, we got a complaint two to three weeks ago from a resident down there on Lots Road about their house rattling. So we actually went out there, met with her in the morning, and stood there and witnessed the rattling. But one thing we did notice, and the homeowner agreed with us, that every time a semi drove up the overpass, her windows rattled. So it was definitely caused by the semi on the freeway.
One-to-one correlation.
Yeah. And she did tell us that when the leaf cover was up in the summer, there were no issues. So something with that sound resonating up to her house was causing it. As far as the issue that we started receiving calls on last night about 9:30, I've, so far, I've contacted Buckeye Pipeline. Went out there and met with their project manager this afternoon. We've talked to Wayne County. They have a project going on down at Woodland Meadows on Van Born. We stopped and talked to them guys. I thought I had the smoking bullet this morning. I pulled up and saw a giant excavator with a breaker and a vibratory roller. Asked them when they worked last night, and they said they didn't. They, they were closed up by 8 o'clock. So darn, I thought I had it solved. Talked to, I'm waiting on a response from DTE. I think they might have a natural gas line around the area. So I've got to call into them. Watuwa, checked with them. I've checked with the landfill, checked with their gas recovery facility. They didn't have anything going last night. They were closed. So process of elimination. We're going through it.
And if we get enough detailed locations from them through the public safety, maybe we'll get a, you know, be able to say, here's the epicenter. And then go to that site and see what you find in the area.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're going to start mapping out all the locations in GIS tomorrow. It's definitely in a mile square radius. That's where most of the calls are coming in.
Is there any additional board comment? Saying none, call for adjournment, motion of close?
So moved.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Well done, guys. Well done.